Alan B. We, um, with Ms. Wade on campus concerning my water bill. She went back all the way to, I think, two thousand and sixteen. And she kinda looked at, um, the rainwater levels. Um, but I don't think that's a real picture of the rainwater that we have been getting in the infiltration system, um, that's being transported over to the wastewater treatment plant. However, they are willing to work with us. She is willing to work with us. We're gonna be getting two individuals from the communities who, who have had a long standing with working with our wastewater, know our piping system, and possibly know of the grant or any kind of, um, document to show the original agreement that was made between the city and, um, the university. And so I will be getting back with her to schedule that meeting when I get with those two individuals from the community to participate, as well as the, um, workshop I wanna have with, um, the representative from S-GAS concerning buyouts and acquisitions and elevations. Um, I sent the email out to the council, and I've been waiting for their response back just to see if there were anything other than those three options that they wanna talk about at their workshop, so I can go ahead and plan it hopefully before the end of the year. If not, then it will be at the beginning of twenty nineteen. Thank you.
So, I've been talking about, uh, abundance of hands ministry. So, uh, right now, it is a ministry that is connected with over twenty-four organizations on the campus that is here to serve, uh, the citizens outside of the university. Uh, currently, we already had three different projects. One, we went door-to-door with the Panther Party to knock on people's doors, let them know about abundance of hands, and to tell them about the Community Watch Program that Councilman Jones and other students have been working on. Also, uh, on Friday, we went out and helped another, uh, Ms. Bowdery with, uh, Commu- uh, Garden, uh, and helped her with that. And then we also went to volunteer fire department on Saturday, where we did a highway cleanup and we helped clean up the station. So, we encourage, uh, there's, uh, service request forms, uh, right outside, and it's gonna be in the, this, uh, what do you call it, the main lobby, uh, which you can take a, it doesn't matter what it is, just fill it out, uh, and give it to one of the nice ladies at the desk, and, and I'll get in contact with you just to try to figure out what we can do to help service, uh, you all. And so, we're just trying to continue to spread the positivity, positivity and build the people within this community. Um, there have been, I'm, I'm on the flooding committee, so there have been a couple of issues in terms of natural waterways being blocked with shrubbery, uh, uh, a lot, lobby, especially on different, uh, different parts of the city that can cause flooding. Uh, so I created a presentation, uh, that was tabled for this meeting last week, but it didn't make it on the agenda. Uh, but I'll be giving the presentation to the council to look at, so that we can hopefully create a plan to alleviate some of these problems. Uh, one of them, uh, there was the issue where when you get to two ninety there, the natural drainers, uh, that goes under it. Uh, but I talked to Mr. Jeffrey Earl, who's, uh, works with Tech Dot for Waller, and he said because, uh, that's the county road, they'll work on that. So, they're already gonna get to that, and they'll let me know. I also wrote a couple policies, um, that'll help the city council, uh, get information, uh, necessary in a, in a time-efficient way, um, and help, uh, delegate some responsibilities within the city. Uh, that was also supposed to be on the agenda, um, that was tabled last time, but hopefully it's on the next agenda, uh, so we can get that going. Uh, and lastly, uh, me and a couple students wanted to work on continuing to build a community. Uh, so we had this project called Protect the Village, in which it's three weeks, in which one week is, uh, one week is based on social events, the next one's community service, and bonding, just so the students can get acclimated with the citizens and the community, and hopefully continue to create that bond. So, I'll keep y'all updated, uh, as those plans go forward, and it's always a pleasure to serve the great city of Prairie View.
Uh, just a quick update on the, uh, city tractor. It's been in the shop for about two months. The bat wings have, and now they're waiting on a part, so it's been a couple of months. So, I know Rich's Road and several areas, uh, the easements, they've been cutting the smaller areas that they can do with the zero turn, but the big ones on main roads like Rich's Road and Rosewood and several other areas, they haven't been able to do that, just the local neighborhoods, but it has been in shock. That's the only reason that, uh, that situation's been taking place. National Night Out was, uh, absolutely incredible. Was able to make it to five of the seven neighborhoods, and all the residents were just wonderful. Uh, ran into Councilman, uh, Roland Randall and Councilwoman Williams out there as well, but the, uh, but the residents and the fellowshipping, and we're picking up on that with the community event coming up. Uh, so we're just hoping all of you will not just come out, but invite some of your friends. It's just gonna be a nice, wonderful meet and greet right here next to City Hall. The, uh, the contractor with the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant is supposed to be starting literally any day now, um, uh, in accordance with some of the other work they're doing. Uh, so they're, like all of us, are, are somewhat busy. There's a, um, meeting with, uh, a state project to go after some additional hazard mitigation or FEMA funds that, uh, that I'm working on. So, in addition to the, uh, roughly, it says seven hundred and twenty-three, it's somewhere around seven hundred and thirty to forty, that, uh, that we qualify for based on what we went through with our damages before, that's being worked on, project management. These are additional monies that, um, uh, we're seeking. The, uh, the Prairie Cricket Complex is, uh, tentatively having a, a tournament somewhere next month, a teenage tournament that they just mentioned to me, and working with the university, and, uh, it looks like we'll be able to at least feed them on campus, so that money that they spend in food, the sales tax dollars would come back to the benefit of the city. Since we don't have anything in the city that could, um, accommodate those type of numbers, they're also looking for roughly a couple of hundred hotel rooms, and, uh, if you'll notice, there's a Marriott courtyard. Been in touch with them and one other entity that, uh, you know, we're just crossing our fingers and hoping that they come to Prairie View as well. The university is also working on a facility on their fifty acres, so between it, and we could use a couple of things right along the freeway that would benefit from, uh, from that traffic. Uh, last Thursday, the permit was granted for the Fuel Max gas station and Checker's Restaurant at University of Two Ninety. So, that real estate venture is supposed to close on October thirty-first, uh, according to, uh, some of the principals that are involved. They shared that with me a couple of days ago. So, we're, uh, we're excited again about that revenue that will come from so many of the cars, hundreds of thousands of cars, at least a week, passing through our city and stopping either in Hempstead, Waller, or somewhere else. Those things along the freeway we're working on. Um, also have, uh, a second meeting that, uh, I'm hoping will take place with Tech Dot, uh, because the need for entrance and exit ramps at Rich's Road is incredible now, because, as, as I shared with them, it's more a safety issue than a convenience issue, because when the cricket thing is laid out and they're full of capacity, which they say will hold up, hold up to five thousand people, and after going to one of their games and seeing almost six thousand come out on an unplanned game, um, they've got numbers, but between that and the housing there, when that's full, we'll have more people at that intersection than we have at the university's intersection. So, they're looking at that, and they're supposed to be coming back with some, uh, prospective plans. The project that, uh, oh, so I was contacted by a professor from, uh, the Duke Cookman University in Florida, and her business marketing class is doing a project to promote our city utilizing our cricket complex that's all over the news. So, as far away as Florida, students and, uh, and other universities are paying attention to what's going on here and helping to promote it, which, whatever you're doing, you can't have too much marketing or promotion, so they're making it a, a class project. Our Republic Waste should be changing out the trash containers at Brookside Meadows any day now, and there are a couple of other smaller, uh, situations who would probably benefit instead of six or seven cans from a small dumpster. It would look nicer, be easier to maintain, and you wouldn't have trash filling out the way it tends to do, um, around the city, so we're working on that, uh, and, yes, Councilman Randall.
Oh, Republic Waste, have they, uh, have they came to reach dollars, uh, for the trash cans? I've had citizens ask about trash considering, getting trash cans, uh, have they came to reach out there?
Uh, no, they were, the problem was that, uh, what happened was, the city was ordering, uh, the extra trash cans, but they weren't returning one with the swap-out. That's why it's free, but we, we got a handle on that, and now that's fixed, and Republic had, uh, been backlog, uh, as well. That was a big part of that, um, also, so that came out in that process. So, yeah, we fixed that, and then they brought in somewhere around fifteen, and, you know, yeah, now they're swapping out, so we'll be back in, uh, big graces and, and doing our part on that as well. Item nine, discuss and take action on. Item eight, discuss and take action on the resolution of the City Council of City of Prairie Texas establishing a policy and procedure for the administration of payment and reimbursement of travel and training of city council members. Uh, Councilwoman Williams, do we have all that, or?
No, Mr. Mayor, we're gonna ask, could we move to the next meeting, because since we were not able to print, then we just wanted to take the documents from, um, Mr. Williams and Ms. Lee.
Okay, sure. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that item eight, uh, on the travel policy be carried over to the next adjournment. You heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You know, Mr. Oz had it. Uh, item nine, discuss and take action on ordinance of the City Council of City of Prairie Texas admitting the code of ordinances to repeal and delete its entirety. Article eight point three zero zero, quote, noise, close quotes, of chapter eight, quote, offenses and nuisances, close quote, adopting a new article eight point three zero zero, quote, noise, close quote, prohibiting unreasonably loud and disturbing noise, providing a penalty for each violation and providing for severalability.
Uh, so, my question is, uh, because this, uh, agenda item is not what I sent in, so is this what you and Chief Solomon had discussed?
No, this is what Chief and the city attorney discussed was appropriate. See, what we wanna do is one thing, and how it comes back in the legal ease is not always gonna be the same, and I guess that's what you're looking at.
So, I think the question is, is this?
I didn't touch it in answer to your question.
Is this, I think you asked, is this, then what the chief was talking about, these are saying, like, they attend to the same issue?
This has to be what Chief Solomon was talking about, because he asked, was it in the packet?
Uh, he didn't even know, you know, Chief Solomon was surprised, he seemed surprised, you know?
So, so, could, could, uh, could I possibly step out to get Chief Solomon, because this also, yeah, 'cause if this was submitted, bro, that...
You might have to knock harder.
Chief, uh, I don't know what mixed up happened, but, uh, item agenda number nine, uh, I had submitted, uh, that we, uh, discuss and take action on, uh, article eight point three, um, and I'm assuming that this is what you and the attorney had worked on.
Yes, I put the attorney, I said to them, they went over, sent it back.
Alright, so. So, you've seen this, we got, we should, we should, I don't know, let's just, uh, if that's the...
No, this is not, uh... No.
So, since it's different from your agenda, if you guys are just gonna pass on it?
No, I, I don't wanna pass on it. I actually wanted, uh, wanted, um, since it is on the agenda, now I don't know the next time I will get this opportunity, I would say full of management the opportunity that is presented, uh, but...
We, we, we didn't know if this was weird.
Yeah, what you were talking about earlier.
Yes, yes, that, yeah, that's not, I have it in a different form, but that is what we were talking about earlier, when it comes to the noise and disturbance on the roadways within these subdivisions.
So, this is, is...
Yes, but I have it in a different form from what you guys have.
You have it like this?
Yeah, I thought you guys were looking for a certain form.
You know, so, so could you, I mean, I, I don't mind, uh, listening to, and what you work with totally, because I think...
What, uh, the complaints that we were getting, uh, is after a certain period of time, you've got people in the neighborhood, uh, there's one, uh, neighborhood, they were having parties, uh, they were parking in people's driveway, not only that, uh, you've got beer cans, you've got people outside yelling, and those are the things that, um, we couldn't do much about, uh, until it got to a certain time of night, well, what was, at any point, that there wasn't any violence or anything. So, what this, what this ordinance here does, it addresses those things when it comes to loudspeakers, amplifiers, loud shouting, yelling, et cetera, in the streets, uh, between ports, uh, churches and residence. But that's, so it addresses all those things that happen while people are, are outside, because what was going on? These people would be outside in the, in the middle of the night, or either ten, eleven o'clock at night, uh, it was causing the neighbors to be, uh, so this gives us, this gives us a way to go out and regulate what's going on out in the streets, not just, not just the loud music, but the things that are going on, uh, when we're talking beer, yelling, screaming, hollering.
So, like, with the lady in charge, that she needs a permit for that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, how do you determine, determine, like, so I know with this music, you can determine, you know, uh, sound by the, the desk or the, so if we keep talking, or...
Well, when we're talking about yelling...
Jesus, just mark your complaints?
Yes, we're responding, uh, we've had officers who, who've gone, who's responded to these calls, they've heard the yelling, they've heard the whooping, they've heard the hollering, but all you could say was, you guys need to quiet down. Uh, even if, if it's a certain time of night, we can only say, you guys need to quiet down. This gives us a me, to not just go there after a certain time, we can say, okay, you know what, you guys are gonna have to leave, because now we've reached that point, where it's now eleven thirty, four o'clock at night, and you guys are gonna have to leave the residence, because the residents, uh, have a right to...
So, there's a time restriction, that's what I'm saying?
Yes.
So, it actually, so, pardon, um, well, I'm gonna ask initially that me and you bring this back, uh, next week, uh, so that way we can formulate, uh, policy in which, um, you basically could grip, because the issue right now, and even, uh, then Mr. Carter talked about it, uh, briefly for a short period of time, so, right now, the city is already, so ordinance in which, uh, noise is supposed to stop after a certain time or whatever.
We're talking, that, that doesn't, that only addresses amplification, and that's why we were able to address these parties that they were having in the field, because when you've got within two hundred yards, uh, two hundred yards of a residence, that's what that covers. It does not cover people throughout the streets in different neighborhoods. That, that ordinance does not cover that.
It just covers loud music.
It just covers loud music, is all it covers.
Okay, so, uh, in the, in the ordinance in which I proposed today, uh, it kinda covers both, um, and I would provide you a copy, uh, after we leave here today.
And this one too, certainly covers both. If you look at it, it says loudspeakers, amplifiers, used, uh, and it also talks about the yelling, shouting, et cetera. Yelling, shouting, loud singing, particularly between the hours of eleven P.M. and seven A.M. Uh, and some of these people, that, that was the issues in the, in these subdivisions. You've got people who are trying to get to sleep after eleven P.M., and you've got people in the middle of the street who's yelling and shouting and, uh, and hollering, and that was, that was the problem. So, this, this actually does address both, the amplifier and those, and those other issues.
So, what you're saying, you wanna do is you wanna take what you prepared, compared to be prepared to y'all, take it and apply it to...
Because, because, uh, and I just wanna put this out there, after I do make the motion.
Yes.
Um, we do know that we have more seasoned citizens that live in these communities and areas, but in the city, it, of where you have a lot of college students, you don't have anywhere for them, that designated area for them which to party in. So, what I did was homework, looking at cities, uh, that have colleges, as well as seasoned people, uh, seasoned community members, uh, what, what they did was came to some coexistence in which those, those parties in, in the field, which are by the campus, they allow for party, first they have to put in the application, which, which, uh, application fee was charged, uh, which, which rejuven, uh, which brings in funds for the city. Um, a lot of Prairie students have a lot of parties throughout the year, that instead of them having it, on that wave, you can actually still hear the music, uh, further down, further behind phase three, and those deals, so that money just goes to the, the city of Waller. So, what I had did was come up with a plan that has, uh, such as, let's see, that has residential and non-residential. So, residential would be, uh, the community areas in which, um, like, Otisville and things of that such, in which is, is houses where people's families and things of that such live, but the areas that were not residential was open landfills in which, uh, students could party, because at some, like, we had this discussion last year, at some point, we won't have to come to a means of agreeing upon, I know that community members don't like their loud noise, and they don't like the party, don't like their streets blocked, but if you don't like the streets blocked, then it's fields that's right by the school that, that will, a lot of opportunities for students to have party without worrying about your driveway, in case of that such thing blocking.
We argue, we have something in place for having a party, so there's a permanent process, but you just have, you have to, you have to go through the same process as if, if you were having a party in a venue, so you have to have the permits, you have to have, police officers, you have to take care of the apartment. The place where people get in trouble when they have these, these parties is, they don't, they don't give one of those avenues with, that they don't, uh, take care of, whether it be security, because the permit for those has to come to you, they have to be approved, right?
Yes.
And so, the current process is, you know, if you wanna have a party in the field, you have to, you know, pay for the permit, but then you have to, you know, be sure that the cars aren't blocking people's driveways or, or any kind of traffic.
And we don't have a permit?
Here's, here's...
There is a permit for you.
When we, when we, when we start talking about, when we start talking about those field parties and those permits and things of that nature, uh, here in, in Prairie View, they were having those parties, and all those parties were within two hundred yards of a residence. Uh, people were complaining, uh, the streets were blocked. They still have those parties in those fields that are in the county, especially the one owned by Doc, what's his last name? Doc Baker? They have those parties there. The county is virtually going against an ordinance that they have in place. There's a mass gathering ordinance that's in place, that's been in place since two thousand and eleven, that the county is just disregarding. Why they disregarding that, uh, that, that, that ordinance, I have no idea. There are, there are rules, and there are, there are certain criteria that you need to have one of those parties in the field. None of those promoters, or whoever these people are, meets that criteria. I'm not against having parties, I understand this is a college town, and like you, I looked at a lot of other college towns when, when we started looking at this, because when I was your age, you know, I came to Prairie View, we partied on the campus. Every campus in the United States have pushed kids off of those campuses, because they've pushed it off of their responsibility, and they put those, they put those things into the city in which those colleges are, and so it takes us, then now we have to regulate those things. We have to come up with things, because just like anybody else, we want these things to be safe. I, I don't think a field party with a bunch of people in a, in a, in a field is a, is a safe thing to do. Uh, but by the same token, I'm a police officer. If you say this is within the law, and this is what we do, then we'll, we'll establish a point to where we can secure that area.
So, what is the policy that's put in place now, that for students from Prairie View camp, if they're dancing today, would like to have a party?
If a student from Prairie View camp appear today and say they'd like to have a party, we need to know where that location is, and we need to know what time that party's gonna be. We've, we've signed, we've signed a lot of permits where somebody who said they're gonna have a party from twelve noon to ten at night, that's absolutely great. That's fine.
Yeah, but in our ordinance right now, what, what it doesn't allow is for a party to happen from ten to two o'clock in the morning.
Right, because that's when it gets into, with the being in two hundred yards of a residence, it gets to being a loud noise.
But if you sit in the field by the cemetery, that's permission, it's not by you, right?
Oh, absolutely not, that's, that's county permission. That's, that, that, that field is in the county.
And so, so what my policy is basically, because, uh, say right across the, uh, the road, from phase three, there's, uh, Borkin's Field, right there. Majority of the, of the, of the people that live in that area are students.
I can't, I can't, I can't. He was, he was, he used to deal with something like that too, it's like, I, I can't regulate and say, okay, this, this area is students, uh, because the ordinance says resident, the ordinance says residence, the ordinance says we, we go by residence. It's like, it's like once somebody asked me about having one of those parties one time, and they said, well, we've talked to all the residents around, and they say it's okay. Well, that's, that's, that's circumventing the ordinance, or what the ordinance said. So, I, I'm with you, and I'm willing to look at what you got, and let's sit down and take a look at it.
And Grant's with you, that, that are citizens that live over there, but if we have a, if we put a policy in, in place, that basically says that students that, that would like to have a party, as a petition, and when they get signed, pay the application fee, and things of that such, then I'm not sure why it, it wouldn't be allowed, 'cause, um...
You're not saying it wouldn't be allowed, you guys are the powers that be, so here's what, here's what you gotta do in that. So, what you gotta say now, with your first ordinance, you gotta take residents out, because when you say residents, that doesn't say student resident, uh, uh, residents of, of the people that's been living here, it says residents. And so, for me, when I look at that, it says, uh, we, we do it wherever there's a residence at, that's where we, that's where we, that's where we regulate that, that's what. So, so you're gonna have to go back in and, and, and take some things out and redo that ordinance. Uh, I'm all, I'm all, I understand kids...
So, have the citizens that stay over there, what are you talking about, saving the open?
Uh, because, because last year, uh, it was two instances in which a student organization had got petition signed, uh, by people that lived at at least two hundred to three hundred and fifty yards of where the community said that it was okay for a party to take place, but...
Is that that field where they go way in the back, back there, almost back up to two ninety? It's, it's on, uh... It's on Owens?
Just Borkin's Field, we keep the voices.
Yeah, you keep the voices.
On Owens, right there?
No.
Right around the loop.
Oh, absolutely not.
Go past the river.
No, that, that place there, that's where we get our most complaints, when they're having that music, is that Mr. Borkin's place, the one that's on ten ninety-eight. That's where we get our most complaints at, because you've got all those residents that are behind there, and when they, when they turn that music up, uh, even if it just, those people start calling us all the time. That's probably the worst place he would have a party.
So, how do you guys have a homecoming?
For our parties? Well, we don't give out any permits. The only permit that was given out last year, or the only place they had a party at when it came to field parties, was over in the county, and that resulted in three people getting shot and a bunch of cars getting broken into. So, uh, we didn't give out any permits here within the city to have any field parties. Uh, we need, we need to, yeah, there needs to be a place here where people can rent controlled environment, and where students can go and have parties at, but it needs to be a...
For a long time, they had the Walker Litt, for a long, uh, for a long, long time, and then the, the trouble started happening at Walker Litt, and she was tearing down the man's pants, so that's why those were stopped.
Yeah. Let's, let's look at it and, and see, and then we'll, we'll, because there may be just some things that need to be changed in the ordinance to, to, to accommodate.
Yeah, we're gonna discuss it here, but we'll be back to it.
But we're just looking at what the residents have been complaining about, and talking to officers who, who are making those calls. Uh, it's ridiculous getting up and down the streets in those neighborhoods, and with the yelling, people finding beer bottles, trash, and all this stuff in their mailbox, and if you go down one of those streets the next morning, uh, they told me about a party that they had, so on my way in the next morning, I drive down that street, both sides of that street was full of trash, so now the residents gotta get out and pick this trash up, out of their yards, and all, and all this other stuff, so it just, I mean...
I mean, I, I understand, I agree that it's not fair, but at, at one more time, as you stated, you guys had somewhere that, that was controlled in which you guys had parties.
Oh, absolutely.
So, I think it's time for us to take a look, and possibly, I was going in that direction too.
I agree with you.
I move...
I'm gonna just say, how you control the field for, that's, that's... It's not, it's not, it's not. Having a party is is the issue, it's more so it's how, how you control it. You you can't control, you can say, you know, I'm gonna allow, you know, X my people. You who who are cases, you know, everybody's gonna. And so.
We gotta, we gotta have a job.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it comes, it comes, for me, from my perspective, you know, I have, I have two, I have two points of views as far as, you know, as far as parties go. Because when they happen Monday, because all the time, I'm always probably the first one to call the police because I believe those people in that neighborhood who are all A and F. Everybody, everybody. I just, I just, I just believe that. I don't, I don't call them for me because I I I don't mind. Personally, I feel like those people deserve a good night's rest. They took their time. And then secondly, it's it's a safety thing. How do you, how do you, it's control it because you you're not, you're not patting people down. You know, your people are dropping, you're not patting them down. The art, you know, art usually isn't enough security. So like I think the noise is the, is the smallest issue overall. I think it's, you know, you know, just just being, how do you keep kids from getting killed at these parties?
Is there a difference between parties something you pay for versus throwing an open party? Is there two different regulations?
What's that, sir?
So is there a difference? Are we describing two different things? A party being something you pay for or an event versus say, uh I do something for the community, I'm just giving, throwing something that's free, a party. Do we have a distinction between the two?
No. Uh the only distinction we have is is the time. That's the only, that's the only distinction we have. With us, it's just about the hours. It's it's not about, even within those hours, it's it's not even about the music or how loud it is within those, within those certain amount of hours.
And so have to keep in mind, our students have been safer. We have not had the killings that were going on at those field parties and things like that last several years, in the last years.
My question is, how far?
So wanna keep, you know, I agree, they they need a place and maybe we need to take a look and see about trying to get a a facility uh in the city, you know, community center, you know, in the city, something like that. As opposed to uh, you know, cause the field parties, they've never had enough police and we've had too many folks who come in, often from out of the area actually, because they go all over the internet and and promoting it. And then we have the chaos here and we're in the newspaper because a student got shot and a mother got, gotta get a phone call.
Well, unfortunately, our community center wouldn't hold them. And so how far are y'all willing to go out in into Waller County to have a party? I mean, how far are y'all willing to go? I know two places where you can go, but it depends on how far you you you're willing to go so that you get.
Well, seems like Doc Baker.
That'd be a discussion.
Doc Baker has that place and he's been, he's been still renting it out. Like I said, uh the county's been at an argument since the two thousand and eleven, a mass gathering ordinance that they're just kind of ignoring.
Yeah, let's let's move it. John's has a motion.
I move uh that we postpone this agenda item. I'm not gonna provide any specific dates.